The first item of business is a second quarter exemplary customer service award. And City Manager Oliver Turner will present that award.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm pleased to be here with Payroll Coordinator Nancy First now here tonight. And as the Commission is aware, at its January 18th, 2016 regular meeting, the Sioux-St. Marie City Commission adopted a citizen service philosophy. This service philosophy calls on all employees to take ownership in being positive ambassadors for the city government and the community, to be mindful that first impressions or chance encounters can define the identity of the city, and even encourage guests or others to move to or invest in the community, and to strive for excellence in service standards at all times. This service philosophy also states that an emphasis is to be placed on teamwork, a commitment to coworkers, and a prudent management of community resources. At the time of the adoption of this philosophy, the City Commission requested that city administration develop a means to publicly thank and recognize those employees whose actions reflect and embody the citizen service philosophy. Accordingly, city administration has developed a process whereby employees are nominated by their peers for excellence in citizen service. These nominations are reviewed by an internal committee that meets quarterly and then forwards its recommendation to the city manager for approval. I am pleased to announce that Payroll Coordinator Nancy First now has earned the exemplary citizen service award for the second quarter of 2016. In the position of payroll coordinator, Nancy exercises constant diligence and integrity. Her organizational skills are impressive, and she possesses a commanding knowledge of the various benefits received by city employees who represent among the most significant and important investments of the city government, and she also applies her knowledge in a consistent manner that supports the effective operation of the city and eliminates errors that could negatively impact the city and its taxpayers. Nancy has also worked tirelessly to ensure that once individuals leave the employment of the city, that they receive the benefits necessary to support their stable and secure retirement, helping them to become secure citizens. Moreover, Nancy thinks of people when they are suffering and supports every local cause that comes her way. In other words, she is entirely invested in our community, and has been so throughout her 38 years as a city employee, which, as it turns out, places her as the longest-serving employee currently with the city. Again, I'm pleased to recognize Nancy for earning this award, and we thank her for her commitment, and this is a certificate that's signed by Mayor Bospis on behalf of the City Commission as well as myself. Thank you so much, Nancy, for what you do.
Thanks, way to go. Like to say a few words, Nancy? Congratulations again. Great job. Okay, item number two, public comment on scheduled agenda items. Any person may reserve time to speak on an agenda item, not to exceed three minutes per person. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on an agenda item? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to item number three, the consent agenda. Assistant City Manager?
Under the consent agenda, A, minute approval. One, approval of the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of August 1st, 2016. Recommended action, approve the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of August 1st, 2016. Item two, acceptance of the minutes of the following boards and commissions. Recommended action is to approve the minutes of the various boards and commissions. A, border review of July 19th, 2016. B, Economic Development Corporation of July 12th, 2016. C, Historic Structures Management Committee of July 27th, 2016. D, P-E-H-P, Police Patrol Unit of July 28th, 2016. N-E, Sioux-St. Marie Housing Commission of June 16th, 2016. Item B, appointments and resignations. One, appointment to the Community Services Board. Recommended action, appoint Ken LaJoy to the Community Services Board to fill the balance of a term to expire July 1, 2018. Item two, reappointment to the Economic Development Corporation. Recommended action, reappoint Kelly Bunker to the Economic Development Corporation for a term to expire June 1, 2022. Item C, communications. One, from the Community Services Board. Approval of Community Services Board bylaws. Recommended action is to approve the Community Services Board bylaws as presented. Item two under communications is from the Michigan Municipal League. Designation of delegates for the annual business meeting. Recommended action is designate Mayor Tony Bospis as delegate and Mayor Protem Don Gary as alternate delegate to the annual MML convention. Item D, City Manager's Report. One, authorization of a renewal of a contract with Conica-Manolka rental agreement with National Office Products. Recommended action is to approve the Conica-Manolka rental agreement as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a Commissioner that'd like something further explained on the consent agenda? Commissioner Bauer?
So moved, we pass the consent agenda.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Bospis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Item number four is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, under the City Manager's Report, would provide for the award of a bid to North Arrow Log Homes for the repair, replacement, and treatment of the Sherman Park Pavilion. On this matter, I've requested that Assistant Department of Public Works and Parks and Recreation Director Dan Wires present to the City Commission.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. As many of you know, the Sherman Park log pavilion has been kind of a subject over the last few years where we've replaced the roof, and we started to take a look at some repairs and things that this facility needed. In fact, even last year, last fall, we took down the old concession stand that was right next to it, and there's other things that we're going to be looking at, and certainly the Sherman Park Pavilion, the log replacement and restoration project is something that you folks undertook in the last fiscal year budget as well. And kind of starting out, I'll go through a few photos. Certainly, you have a photo up on the screen that actually is a little bit dated, a little bit. You can see where the paint is peeling, and you can see the logs are starting to fall apart there as well, and that's facing the south to the porch. And from the side view for the pavilion, you can see where you have the, it's kind of hard to see, but it's green, but we have the steel roof that's on there as well. So that is well protected, and that happened a few years ago. And the porch itself was starting to slant towards the river even more, so it's been somewhat shored up, and you can see a beam that's up in the center of the porch that Wilcox Construction did when they put the roof on a few years ago. Another angle, you can see where the old concrete block and where the posts are, where it's holding up the porch, and over towards the steps coming down, you can see the two logs. I think it'll be a better picture here, there is part of the log there in the left-hand corner that was done to shore up the porch, but you can see where the logs are really starting to not only just fade, but there's also some rot. It's been there a while. And so, part of this project was to look at the restoration for some of the logs that aren't quite bad yet, but they need some help and a replacement of a lot of the logs. I want to say, it's been at least eight, at least eight years since the last time we painted it, at least eight years. So this is a current photo. Again, some logs that aren't even going to be able to be repaired. They are, they're done, they need to be replaced. This is some photos of the porch floor. And there's a corner shot where some of it is kind of giving way, and you see where you have some plywood there that's kind of covering some of the porch floor, and it's all wooden as well. This project will help take care of this issue as well. And there's the door coming out from the pavilion, and you can see where we've put some sheets of plywood down. Going around the building, you can see some of the corners that are bad, from our understanding and through U.P. Engineers, there's a lot of good logs that are still there. But you can see where some of the corners, some minor repairs that have been done over the years. Again, here's one on the south side towards the grill pit where a whole log, right down to the foundation, has given way. The building's not moving, the building's in great shape, just we've got some bad logs. Another, from an angle, you can see, and obviously, in most of the pictures, you can also see a lot of the, especially for the folks at home, a lot of the peeling paint, the logs are starting to show directly. There's one that was giving way as well, and that would need to be repaired, and on some of our end pieces, you can see over the years. Again, there's some of the logs on the far west end that are kind of sticking out that need some replacement, that have been, over the years, we've put some foam in, we've done different things to it, some of our pieces on the very end. And again, this log restoration, replacement, and treatment project calls for the structure to be media blasted, and I understand it's a crushed glass, crushed glass that will take this right down to the bare wood. Also calls for the log repairs. And the log repair, we have set at 116 lineal feet. The log replacement, roughly 262 lineal feet. No chinking throughout the structure between the logs. I understand it's oakum is the name of the material. This will all be new oakum throughout the whole structure. And the porch is, part of the recommendation is to be raised and a new deck installed, replacing the old deck. And one of the concepts that came through North Arrow Log Homes was the products sansin, it's a penetrating treatment, and it's an environmental stain to be utilized that will help that structure be around for a lot of years. And this project is partnered with U.P. Engineers and Architects, they did the specifications, and will be working with us also on the contract and the inspections. And North Arrow Log Homes, Mr. Alex Rivers, and he is in the audience tonight. And that is the presentation as far as sharing some photos with you. I know that some of the Commissioners may ask, there was two bidders on this, there was a low bidder, a lower bidder, but that low bidder did have an incomplete bid, it left out a whole item number three, which had no log replacement, and as you can see that there's total logs that need to be replaced, they're not just repaired. And the other bidder also was not currently licensed to do business in Michigan, and their log repair price was very, very low. So that's the reason why we went with North Arrow Log Homes.
We might have a couple of questions. Let me just ask, start, Commissioner Gage may have a question. The staining that will occur, is there any idea of how long the finish will last before you should stain it again?
That is a question I would probably ask Alex, who's here. It's a good question, I think it's, do you want to answer that, or do you want me to?
Yeah, within the stain.
If you wouldn't mind coming up, thanks. This is for folks that are listening at home.
Okay, so, hi, my name is Alex Rivers, North Arrow Log Homes is my business. With the stain that we're proposing, there's several different product lines, I'm just going to reach in your brochure here. There, within the wood, the standard that we use is what's called the sansin classic, which is basically like a transparent stain, so you see the actual wood tone or the wood grain beneath the stain. With that being said, nine times out of 10, most people, when they build a brand-new home, they're using a really transparent paint or stain because they want to be able to see the wood grain, just like all these, you know, this desk here. But depending on how the media blasting goes and how well the finish actually shows through, once we get the logs back down to bare wood, we could choose that product, or there's other styles of stain. I know that with the product that we use, it's very, very cost-effective for maintenance in the future. So basically, the process is you put two coats of stain on, and then you put a third coat that's a UV guard. And basically, the UV guard, in layman's terms, is like, it's basically like sunscreen, because what really hurts stain more than anything, or wood, is the sun beating down and actually wood will get burned from the sun. So by applying a UV guard, the normal cost, I threw at him, would be for a five-gallon bucket, which would be adequate for the whole building, is roughly right around $300, and you could have a guy do that in a day. It consists of putting in a garden pump sprayer and spraying it on and brushing it in the wood fiber, goes really, really fast, and you could do this process every two years. And in essence, we've done homes that are 15-years-old that look just as good as the day we stained them, as long as they keep up with the maintenance. But I don't know how it works with the more paint-style stains, you know, if you wanted to go with like the traditional red color, you know, more of a solid stain, we'd have to do a little research on that, but I can get an answer pretty quick for you.
I would just want, once you get to that point where you actually look at the actual wood and see if it's something that you want to see the wood, or you want to cover the wood, then what, the administration will make the decision?
Sure.
Correct, Mayor, if that's the pleasure of the Commission, we will work on it.
Yeah.
Maybe to answer that too, Mayor, what's on there is kind of like an old barn red.
Yes.
It's kind of, and that's been the color that's been on that pavilion for a lot of years. So once this gets taken down to the bare wood, we may want to switch gears. Now, we do have a lot of colors, you know, for the folks at home, we have a lot of different colors, and we may want to be able to pick something a little lighter tone as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gage?
So before I ask my actual question, not to sound like a kid, but I want to pick the color, you know.
You're not going to.
Yeah, I'm well aware of that. Absolutely, hey, easy there.
We'll pass.
The thing is, as I was reading this in the packet, I think this is a great thing to vote on tonight. I'm excited to see the cost of some of the pieces and parts of this be as low as they are, but I think this underscores the importance of really working on deferred maintenance and having a capital improvement plan, having it scheduled on a regular basis to take care of things. Because unfortunately, you know, that slideshow was not good. I didn't like any of the pictures that I saw on it, and I'm happy that Director Wires pointed out that there were some good logs there. Obviously, this is a pretty big problem. Do we have a lot of similar things like this, Dan, or Mr. Director, in some of our other parks? I mean, this seems like it's pretty bad. Do we have other deferred maintenance issues that we need to take care of?
Well, there's different issues, different parks, different facilities. Certainly, this is one that's been, you know, that pavilion's been here in this community a lot of years. And I think over the years, I think the Coast Guard at one point, many years ago, did some maintenance to that, for that, with the city type thing. You know, when we start to talk structures, playground equipment, for instance, one that might pop out is project playground. That's all wood, folks, and we've had that since the year 2000. So we are 16-years-in on that project, and we have kept up with the staining of that, and it's arsenic-free, for some of the, for the people at home, we had that tested, and it's arsenic-free, so that's still holding up. So one of the issues, Harvey Marina, there's a lot of wood there. So we, different places where we can, you know, put a lot of resources in, this is one of them, and that's something that's always ongoing. Keep an eye on some of that and try to come up with more maintenance-free type materials as we go forward.
Okay.
Absolutely.
There are three recommendations in discussion with the City Attorney, those are three separate motions. Commissioner Bauer?
Yeah, I also had one quick question, and that is, do we have any idea whatsoever what the timetable is going to be on that?
We...
Or is it too hard to tell, really?
In the agreement would be, we're looking, other than we have a few issues, to get started, we're looking at finishing up near the, I want to say, the end of September, into the first part of October. Obviously, the park closes in October, we want to get it done this year, so we will be working on this once the Commission approves that. I would suspect by no later than October 15th, we would be complete.
Great, then in that case, I move that we authorize a budget revision to reflect a total budget for the project to be set at $74,000.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Commissioner Lynn?
If I remember right, my mother used to take me to Sherman Park back in the 40s, that building was there, so that's a very old building. If you take a look at it, okay. I think it was there in the 40s. And the other thing is that, you know, we're after businesses to have their storefronts look nice, we want people to take care of their homes, cut their grass, get the junk cars off the front yard, and then the public sees this, which the city owns.
I was wondering if Rob Brown had been out there.
We need to get this done.
Thank you. We have a motion in support for item number one. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Mayor Bospis?
Yes. Motion carried. Item number two, Commissioner Bauer?
I further move that we authorize the transfer of $11,100 from the old concession stand down the Lisham Project, and $21,900 from the general fund contingency fund to complete this project and to supplement funds already budgeted for this work.
Support. It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Mayor Bospis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. And the third recommendation?
And finally, I so move that we award the Sherman Park Pavilion Log Restoration Project to North Arrow Log Homes, Inc. of Pickford, in the amount of $64,133, as it was the low bidder, meeting all specifications, and authorize city administration to incur additional project-related costs up to the project budget of $74,000.
Support. It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Mayor Bospis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item B, under the City Manager's Report, would provide authorization to pay off the 1994 recreational bond. As outlined within the memorandum, the final closing on the transfer of the golf course property occurred on July 8th, 2016. Although many meetings and discussions on the disposition of the golf course properties occurred within recent months, final action must be taken to approve the payoff of the 1994 recreational bond associated with past drainage improvements made to the course. This final authorization is being sought at this time, as the closing date has now been identified. Accordingly, a budget can be established to make full payment on the remaining balance of the recreational bond in the current fiscal year. Specifically, there is currently a principal balance owed of $107,575.32, and interest accrued, which would amount to $3,905.61. A payoff quote has been included within the packet, and as discussed during the City Commission's budget workshop, the funds that would be used to make this payment would be drawn from the accrued fund balance of the debt service fund, being Fund 351. Accordingly, my recommendation that the City Commission authorize the requested budget revision to cover principal and interest payments of the 1994 recreational bond for the golf course in the amount of $111,500, as presented. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we understand that the recreational bond goes through the central savings bank, so I don't know, Commissioner Lynn, you want to ask?
Should I abstain from that?
Okay, so you'd be abstaining. Commissioner Gary?
Make a motion to authorize the requested budget revision to cover principal and interest payments of the 1994 recreational bond for the golf course in the amount of $111,500.
Support. It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Mayor Bospis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes. Motion carried, thank you.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Sure.
Are we officially out of the golf club business? Is this it?
Thank you, Commissioner Lynn, for that question. At this point in time, yes, the city is out of the golf course business. The only incident in which the city would re-enter that business, at least what was formerly the crossings and is now the Sioux-St. Marie Country Club, is if for some reason the deed restrictions requiring that an 18-hole golf course be on premises and be open were not met somehow.
Thank you. Next item.
Item C, under the City Manager's Report, would provide for the renewal of a lease agreement with the Sioux-St. Marie area public schools for trail enhancements and public access. For this matter, I would request and invite Mr. Wires back to make the presentation to the City Commission.
Welcome back.
Glad to be back. The, this project is, in essence, a continuation from when it was started quite a few years ago, 22-years ago. I think, well, in recent times, I think Robin and Oliver said, we've got an agreement that's kind of, kind of went out of date, but yet at the same time, Mr. Denny Dougherty, who's been very active, as you know, in planning and doing some trail improvements, has brought a lot of things in front of you folks, as well as the recreation, and is doing lots of good things up there even as we speak. So this is really something that's to follow, continuation of our relationship with the Sioux area schools. And the old agreement was 22-years-old, the new agreement, we're shooting for 50, but we have 25-years. And really, it's pretty much a basic continuation as things develop. Certainly, if there's something new, we would bring it to the school board if needed, but this kind of gives, as you can see on the map, the property issue, it gives us the ability to develop some of the trails there, and they're still being developed. That's why there's an option A or an option B with this project, and certainly gives us the ability to expand and work on those trails. And the bigger piece to it is, one, it's not only just 25-years, but it helps create the pathway so that it's always publicly accessible.
Any questions of Mr. Wires? Commissioner Gage?
Any chance we can change the name of the trails? I don't think that inspires health and active lifestyles, the way it's currently named, just saying.
It'll come back. This is going to go... It'll come back. This is going to go... ...on for a while, right?
I hope so.
When it comes due.
Your honor?
Yes.
We don't want to make it Memorial Trail, okay?
True. Commissioner Bauer?
I guess the other thing I was going to say to that was that with any luck, Dan, you'll never have to deal with this one again, right?
Well, you never know. You never know. The William Lynn Trail is heavily used. We have walkers, joggers, snowshoes, skiers. We, you know, and it is something where it's in a very good location. It's kind of a hidden gem in many ways. It truly is. And certainly, twenty-two years creeps up on us real fast, and a lot of things have happened from when this started. It was, I believe, originally the wetlands enhancement project that was at the bottom of the hill and to the south, and that's been developed, maintained, and this gives, you know, gives a lot of different possibilities going forward.
We would certainly like to thank Dr. Tim Hall, the school board, for this continued cooperation. It certainly helps make Sioux Saint Marie the place that it is, and certainly does, Dougherty will talk a little bit about later during Commissioner comments, but great individual doing an awful lot of good work in the community, so.
Did somebody make or recommend? Oh, then I will. Okay. I move that the commission authorize the city manager to execute the included lease agreement with the Sioux area public schools for trail enhancement and public access as presented.
Support. It's been moved, supported. Are there any further questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhoutt?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item D, under city manager's report, pertains to recreational vehicle and trailer parking within city right-of-ways. On this matter, I've requested that Police Chief John Riley present to the city commission.
Okay.
Evening, Mayor.
Evening, Chief.
This has been a topic that's been floating around the city for the past several years. Almost every office, from the city manager's office, my office, engineering, has gotten some sort of complaint, one manner or another, from residents about trailers, RVs, boats, semis parked on, mainly residential streets. Makes it difficult for a homeowner at times to see around the vehicle if they're pulling out of the driveway. Sometimes, if it's across the street, it's hard to back out of the driveway. Sometimes, they're too close to the driveway. Just any number of complaints that we've gotten. So for the past couple of years, the various departments in the city have gotten together, and we've been working, seeing what the possibilities are, and addressing these. We know that parking is limited in the city for a lot of residents, a lot of the homes, but we also have to take into consideration the traffic, you know, the safety of the motorists, being able to see and be seen. Did a lot of research on the police chief's listserv. I believe included in your packet were five ordinances from five different cities. I received a total of ten, anywhere from the city of Warren to the city of Iron Mountain, in Ironwood. And they range anywhere from, I think it's Ironwood, they prohibit it, period. No trailers, RVs, anything on any city streets. Then you get into Esconaba, theirs is rather lengthy. They've got all kinds of exceptions and permits, and just all kinds, they allow it for certain periods of time. So we used that, and putting our heads together, we came up with a draft ordinance. It deals with various types of vehicles. You'll see in the description, it breaks it down. You've got sports trailers, campers, motorhomes, semis, personal trailers, commercial vehicles, commercial trailers. It breaks it down by that type of category, and the ordinance would permit certain types of parking. A camper, you're going to go camping tomorrow. You get twenty-four hours. And again, this is just in a draft. This is what we put down on paper. You get twenty-four hours, it can be parked in the street in front of your house so you can load it out, okay? And at the end of the twenty-four hours, it's got to be gone. You're gone, you come back, you can go there again for twenty-four hours. So you can unload it, and then it's got to go wherever you store it. That's allowed. That's a given. We also inserted a permit, seventy-two-hour permit that would be issued by the clerk's office. The owner of the camper, the resident, would come in, register the vehicle, get a permit. I drew up a sample of a registration form, application, and sample permit. Put this in a window, it can be there for seventy-two hours. There are some other issues that have come up since this draft was created, consecutive permits. We're going to allow two consecutive permits, six consecutive permits. So there are some things that we need to further address. Number of permits per year. Is it going to be unlimited? We're going to limit it. But this is a start. We had the city attorney involved in this. So we all put something into this and came up with this draft, and I believe the city manager has added it to the agenda to come up for city, or public comment. I think that's where we are with this.
Discussion. City manager, you'd like to follow on, and then we can ask the commission for some comments?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance was drafted after receiving what we perceive to be a critical mass of feedback, where you have a certain number of citizens communicating with city administration about a particular issue. And certainly, there are changes such as these within the physical environment of the right-of-way, you know, that informed our recommendation as far as releasing it for an invitation for public comment in a period of forty-five days.
Okay, thank you. And commission, I think, I would think, all of us, one time or another, have been talked to about someone blocking a driveway, or someone blocking a stop sign because they couldn't see around it. It's been fairly significant problem, and I think the staff has done this draft. They've got, and we certainly haven't had the whole verbiage on the draft, and I would think forty-five days might work. We may need it a little longer, but it's something that could be, create problems for a number of folks in the community, but ultimately, parking a motorhome or a trailer on your property is not what we're talking about. We're talking about parking it on the street at this point, right? And I think forty-five-day commentary is probably a good idea. If folks will get involved in discussing it, letting the administration know, you're going to talk about that, right? See an answer?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Other question? Commissioner Osterhoutt?
Yeah, I guess this, I send her to think back of all the other ordinances that have been passed in the past. I think of people supposed to pick up after the dogs in the street or anything else. And I guess this question's for Chief Riley. Is this, is this going to be something you're going to need more man-hours to enforce, chief, or is this something that you find is going to be an issue enforcing?
No, this won't be an issue. If we do an enforcement on this, if we write a ticket, depending on what the commission does with an ordinance, and it would be a misdemeanor and the fines, it would just be on routine patrol. If somebody has the permit from the clerk's office, it's to be visible in a window, officer would drive by and see it. There's a big spot for the date and everything. If there's nothing there, and the officers will have to keep an eye on certain ones, see if they exceed the twenty-four hours. But it's something that can be handled in routine patrol.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bauer?
I would also tend to say that, you know, an RV or something like that would be a lot easier to spot than a dog mess on the sidewalk. There's no, there's no missing that. There's one other thing, though. I was just wondering if this was also going to include situations, and I don't know if it could or if it couldn't, because I'm not a legal expert, but in regards to people who park their RVs and such on property that is not city property, but owned by someone else who's out of town and has no knowledge of the fact that it's parked there, which does occur.
Really?
I mean, I've seen it happen.
Right, okay.
You know, I mean, I can even give an example, like, you know, the Cooper Dental Lot now, before they, you know, before they took, before Dr. Cooper bought that, and that was just like a vacant lot that was kind of no man's land, and there was somebody in the neighborhood who would, you know, park out, park a big RV out there and just leave it there all summer, and nobody really seemed to care because nobody cared that much about the lot, you know what I mean? So...no, I cared, because every time I looked out the window, it was staring me in the face for three months, you know, but...
I guess my question, that would be, it's on private property, would be between private property and the person parking it. We're talking about the city street or right-of-way where we have a public domain. A city attorney, does that muddy the water type of thing, where we don't have a lot of?
There's a lot of land out there that's owned by people who aren't necessarily aware of what's going on with their property.
City attorney?
Illegally parked vehicles on private property are already prohibited by ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Gage?
So I have a question, and then I'll make a motion. So is it currently, until we pass something like this, it's currently not illegal at all to put a trailer or an RV on the right-of-way into perpetuity?
City manager, can you answer that, or do you need city attorney?
This may actually be a question for the chief of police. He would grace us with this.
You might want to sit in the first seat until we're done with it. Looks like they walk up and down.
My question's got the whole staff.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, so currently, until we pass something that does regulate it, is there anything that says you can't park in a city right-of-way with a trailer or an RV into perpetuity?
I haven't seen anything in the ordinance book. We do have time limits on parking. We call them red tags. You may see an orange sticker on the car, it's parked there for too long. But as far as an RV or a trailer, I haven't seen anything in the ordinance book. That's why we developed this, because of the complaints that we received, and we weren't able to enforce anything.
And then I so move that the city commission invite public comments to be received on the presented draft ordinance for this period of forty-five days, and revisit the subject matter at a future city commission meeting.
Support. It's been moved, supported. Are there any additional comments or questions? Again, this is a draft, so it's certainly subject to change, but it's important that at least a word gets out that we are considering this, and that information is certainly invited by the total public. Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhoutt?
Yes.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
That concludes the city manager's report. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. Item number five is a status report.
Item A, under status reports, would provide for the introduction of the city's web-based geographic information system. This matter, City Engineer Basista, will present to the commission.
Evening, Minister.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So tonight, after many long years in the making, this was a city commission goal before I started here at the city, that was the request to have geographic information system mapping access accessible to the public. So for those who don't know, geographic information system is basically putting data on a map that is accessed by looking at and pointing to a particular spot on the map for access to the website. You go to our city website homepage, right up top at the site shortcuts is a GIS web mapping. It will take you to the site where you can launch the mapping from. I'd like to thank some people before I get into the map. Joe Miller from my office, he's the GIS technician, has been with the city full-time for two years now, and was, position was created specifically for creating and maintaining our GIS system. And once we kicked the creation of the GIS system off, we also created a GIS committee within the city staff, which included IT Director Bonnie Raphael, our assessor Tina Fuller, Community Development Director Kelly Freeman, and my department would be Joe, Terry Collins, and myself. We're on the GIS committee in determining mainly how to present, in what form we wanted to present the data, and what we wanted to see. So many minds cover a lot of ground, and we were able to come up with how we're presenting this information tonight. And I would say also, I'd like to thank the assessor's office, because without their cooperation, we would not have been able to move forward with our GIS system. So when you launch the site, and we're on Wi-Fi, so it might be a little slower than if you were plugged right into the system. There is a disclaimer that this is for information only, that some people...this is very useful tool for especially realtors, developers, engineers, looking for information on the city system. However, all the information always has to be verified before they use it for actual business. So you accept the disclaimer, and it launches you into the city. This is what you see when you first launch the site. The base map, as you, when you first launch the site, is a USGS underlying base map, but you also see all the city streets and I-75. This is very similar in a lot of ways. A lot of people are used to Google Maps, Bing Maps. So maneuvering in this GIS system is very similar in that regard, but we also have a lot of neat tools to display. So over here, to the right, is a arrow, and when you click on that, that brings up the layers and legends. So the default map has, as I said, the USGS base map. It also, parcels are turned on, our roads, lakes, and streams. Our recreation areas are shown in green, and our municipal boundary. But you can, you can turn, you could also turn our aerial image on, and we have, right now, we have three aerial imagery years, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and six, and nineteen ninety-eight, which I'm going to show you a neat trick to look at between those maps if you wanted to. So you can, you can look at the aerial image or go without the aerial imagery. So you can toggle that on and off as you need. Parcels will show up only as you zoom into the maps. And then there's various tools to move around through the map. Right now, I'm just going to use this actual hourglass, eyeglass tool, which is for zooming in, and you just click on it, and you can pick an area to zoom in on. And when you zoom in and the parcel layer is up, the parcels will turn on. So now you see parcels, and as you scroll around in the, in the map, you see a parcel number pop up. And you can click on it for more information, and you can see who the owner is and the address, and you can move around, and I'm not going to pick on a particular private individual, but I will go to a city parcel. And this is City Hall property, and if you click on Show Details, it brings up the property, a property report. It's not the entire report that you would get by going to the assessor's office and getting the property card, but you get the property address, owner's name and address, and general information regarding the current tax year, taxable value, SEV, also the acreage, and the zoning, and a legal description, and sales information. So that is available. Anybody looking from home can go in and see this information by clicking on the parcel. I'm going to go back to extents, that's this, it takes you back to the entire city, and look at the rest of the layers that we have. So I just mentioned the parcels. We have transportation. The legends, when you click on these tabs, show you what the legends are. And so we, for our streets, we have the state trunk lines, which are red. City major roads are a thicker line, and city local roads are a thin line. And we also have the airport and the railway line. This would be good for maybe businesses coming in, they want... This would be good for maybe businesses coming in, they want to see where our services are. And again, it's mainly, um, geared towards the city, uh, mainly city services or city, um, business. We also have, uh, lakes and streams. Contour is one of my favorites that I use a lot. Um, it looks messy here, but I'll just zoom in and it gives, we have our ten-foot and two-foot contour mapping. So we can, you know, somebody looking to move into the city, might be looking for property, maybe wants some hill area or some flatland, uh, would be able to use these contour lines to see where, where that is. We have government facilities and that is primarily the hospital, airports, city-owned properties, uh, county, police, department, so only government and school. If you have a large, just so you know, if you have a large monitor, you can see a lot more on the screen at once. Another layer is our voting. So you can see our, you can see our voting precincts, the areas and, um, where the, I zoomed in too far, where the, uh, actual precinct locations are. Washington School, Lincoln School, and First United Presbyterian Church. Uh, we have cadastro, which is section lines and quarter section lines. Uh, zoning is another. So if, uh, someone were wanting to see what their property was zoned as or a developer coming in wanting to see the various zoning areas, that would be a useful tool for them, useful layer. As well as our, we've put in our industrial parks. And that shows up. I'll turn off the zoning because that'll show up better. So you can see our industrial parks. And city utilities. The red is where we, um, where city sewer service is available or in the general vicinity and blue is where there is water. And we also have wetlands, which very interestingly or not coincide with where we don't have utilities because there's no development there. And then finally, the, um, final layer is buildings. So this was as a result of getting our, um, contour mapping done. They also show, we also show the buildings. So you, you actually have to zoom in for that. Or... And then you see the buildings pop up. And these are buildings, just buildings that are larger than twenty by twenty, basically. So there's a lot of very good, useful information currently available. And then there, in the system, uh, AlmoGam LLC is the host of the website and, um, it's called Fetch GIS. They host a lot of municipal municipalities' websites. And as part of their service that they offer, there are a lot of tools that can be used. Uh, you can draw on the map, you can add text, uh, you can measure areas, distances. Uh, one useful tool that we, um, especially the planning and zoning uses a lot is when you have, when we send out notices for zoning, note of rezoning and that kind of thing, we have to buffer. You have to do three-hundred-foot notifications. You can go in, pick a parcel and it'll, it'll run a report and give you all the properties in that three-hundred-foot buffer. So that's, that's, um, a useful tool that's already been in use for quite a while that we've been using ArcGIS. And then last I want to show you is this cool little tool. And if, if we were a faster-growing city, this would be even more interesting, but for now, uh, we have, I'm sorry, I have to turn on, you have to have the aerial imagery on. So if you turn on the aerial imagery and go to this, uh, Layer Swipe and Enable Layer Swipe, I'm just going to go between nineteen ninety-eight and, uh, and then two thousand and eleven would be the base aerial. You can swipe to see what the differences have been. There we go. Over here. You can swipe and see what it has changed and especially since Walmart was built in between nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand and eleven, you can see it. So this is also a good tool that we use, um, to see how things have changed over time. Maybe somebody built a house without a permit, but, uh, or... But, um, so that's, those are some of the very useful tools. You can do searches, parcel search, uh, based on parcel ID number or owner name or address. When you do a search, you can get a search, let's see, I'm just going to put my name in. Search my name. And up pops my, um, that I own a property here and then here's my, um, property report. And it takes me right, takes you right to the property, to the parcel. So that's one of, one of the things you can do with, uh, search. Clear that. Go back to the extents. Um, up here, again, is it, the layers is, this just brings up the layers, which can also be brought up from the side. There's a location which... It, it will show you your current location, but probably have to turn something else on. And then you can print. And so if you, if you ran a report, uh, it will bring up and you can put in a, you can, you can adjust your, you can even leave on this swipe feature or turn it off. Um, and you can print, add titles and so forth. So we think that, uh, besides being very useful for staff so far, because we've been using not the Fetch GIS on, not the web-based, but we've been using Arc Reader, which is a, a, uh, Esri GIS tool. Uh, it's, it's been very helpful and efficient in helping us do our work. And now with it being rolled out to the public, we believe, one, realtors will use it a lot, which will lessen the amount, number of phone calls that come into, uh, the Assessor's Office for one. And, um, it's public information, so it's available to the public. And, so, we invite you to go check it out and play with it.
Well, I, you know, an awful lot of information. Um, I think it was former Commissioner Bill Munson started that many, many years ago, um, back in the mid nineteen nineties, I believe. And we're finally getting to it, which you can see from the amount of information on the, on the, uh, tool itself. It did take an awful lot of time to get here, but now that we're, we're here, um, people availing themselves to, well, is it good for all iPhones or, uh, cell phones, that kind of stuff? Is it accessible or is it not big enough?
I, sorry, I don't know the answer. That would be, that would be a lot of information. You could try it. I mean, any, any web, I don't think it's specifically designed, you know, for iPhones or Droids phones, but from your home computer or...
I was, I was just trying it here on the laptop and like it was going slow anyway with Wi-Fi, so I don't think a phone would be able to do it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of Linda? Very good. Thank you. City Manager?
Uh, item B, under Status Reports, is, uh, information pertaining to the Economic Resources Alliance. And as a bit of background, the, uh, Economic Resources Alliance was formed in early twenty sixteen and is comprised of various local agencies, uh, that are active in the community and have an interest in economic development, uh, which range from the Sioux-Saint Marie Economic Development Corporation, uh, SMART, which is, uh, a corporation that has managed the SMART Zone, uh, the Sioux Area Chamber of Commerce, the Chippewa County Health Department, uh, Chippewa County Economic Development Corporation, EUP Regional Planning, Michigan Works, uh, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the city, uh, the DDA, Michigan State Extension Office, and the USDA Rural Development Office. And the goal of the Economic Resources Alliance is to provide a clearinghouse of sorts for entrepreneurs and businesses that are both starting out and existing and require, uh, local assistance from, uh, the various agencies that have been detailed. And specifically to recognize that the various processes, um, with this kind of collaboration can hopefully be streamlined, uh, to really help cultivate growth and predictability in the development process. The group is really working to market Sioux-Saint Marie and its surrounding area, promote the business climate, um, educate each other about the goals and missions of each organization, uh, promote local success stories. And specifically, um, the group is, in regards to City Commission goals, is helping to advance, uh, the City Commission goals of divesting select city properties, returning them to the tax rolls, embracing the concepts of economic gardening, um, supporting the redevelopment of Baloney's Alley vicinity and the development of concierge program. EDC Executive Director Jeff Holt is here tonight to present to the City Commission about some of the specific projects that the Economic Resources Alliance is undertaking. But certainly it's, uh, it's an exciting and innovative approach to how we manage our, um, local development activities.
Evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, thank you. This was started as, uh, Oliver indicated, early this year. We found that, uh, folks were a little confused as to how to not only navigate how to start a business or expand their business, but who to contact and, and when. And we feel that this, uh, this initiative provides virtually all the information, um, that they might need or at least, uh, point them in a direction that, uh, that would assist them. And this seemed to be a natural fit to our, to our task at the Economic Development Corporation. We launched this about two weeks ago and we've already had three hits on the site, which was, uh, real exciting for us. And, uh, two are very, very viable. One was, uh, they wanted, they thought it was Sioux-Ontario, which was a compliment in itself. Uh, so we directed them to the proper authority in, in Sioux-Ontario. But telling them first, if you ever want to do business in Sioux-Michigan, you know where to, you know where to contact. So, uh, we're real excited about this and we will continue to report on this because it's, uh, it's very important. And, um, one of the areas that, um, that we're real excited about, um, is to promote our facility. Uh, a lot of folks drive by our building and not really sure what it does or, or what it's for. And, uh, so we at the same time wanted to update our website for the Economic Development Corporation. So we incorporated this ERA into our, uh, Economic Development Corporation website. And, uh, you'll see on the top of the, of the site, uh, Doing Business. And, uh, it's, it's easy to follow, uh, user-friendly and we did it in-house. And with the help of, uh, SBDC, Josh Billington and Tracy Leighton, uh, our resource specialist, um, we, uh, we got this accomplished and we're very happy about it. And we would welcome any, uh, comments that anyone might have, uh, to help us improve that. Uh, it's a, it's always a work in progress. Uh, we always add, uh, new things to the site and we've got local partners, uh, referenced in the, in the site itself. Real happy about it.
Uh, any questions of Jeff? It's certainly great, it's a great opportunity, um, you know, and it's nice to see Chippewa County EDC also as one of the, the partners in the Economic Resource Alliance, um, like a one-stop. If someone's interested in, in growing business or needing assistance, they, they know, they get hold of one of those partners, that they will get, get to an eventual answer.
Yep.
It's great. Commissioner Gage?
I guess my only comment is that this is the third Commission meeting in a row in which you've come to us with some amazing, awesome, fantastic news. And so you're already, uh, worth your salt.
Thank you. That's a, I can't take all the credit. As a matter of fact, Oliver and I were chatting about this in late two thousand and fifteen and, you know, kind of a what-if chat. And, uh, Oliver came up with some ideas and we met with SBDC and when the, uh, the position was filled with Tracy, um, it, it just took off. Uh, not only our social media, but our website itself. And, uh, um, we're, we're real, real happy about it so far. Want to get results, but, uh, we're happy so far.
Commissioner Ostrout?
How does the ERA tie in with the business concierge that we're starting to do as well? Does that, uh, these go hand-in-hand, Oliver or Jeff?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Ostrout. So right now, the, uh, Economic Resources Alliance and the EDC has released a request for qualifications, uh, soliciting interest from qualified firms through September first that would be able to have a role, uh, in helping to develop the concierge program, specifically gauging which, um, which specific businesses, uh, markets would be solicited. Certainly that's something where Jeff had mentioned, uh, small business development and Josh Billington, who's here, has played a key role in that as well. But there is a request for qualifications that has been sent out, uh, to start that project.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Certainly I, I see Josh sitting back in the, in the audience. He's been here many, many meetings, pretty quiet, uh, but ultimately, you know, he's, he's been involved in the communities for several years now and he's done an exceptional job in the, in that kind of a business development and is certainly assisting, uh, Jeff, uh, with EDC and, and the city of Sioux-Saint Marie. So Josh, I know you're back there and continue the good work that you, that you do.
To be fair, Your Honor, he's quiet during the meetings. He's not so quiet outside of the meetings. I tell you that right now.
That's important. Going the right way.
Uh, Josh is also helping the Alpena community as well. So he's pulling double duty these days. So he's on the road a lot.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that concludes the Status Report section of the agenda. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Item number six, matters presented by the public. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to make a comment at this time? Okay, here and now we'll go to item number seven, matters presented by the City Commission. Commissioner Bauer?
Yes, and it's kind of funny because we're talking about, um, the, uh, ERA. And, uh, another group though, or a group that is a nonprofit that helps businesses, uh, whether they're upstarts or trying to advance, um, and they also foster entrepreneurship, is Northern Initiatives. And they helped me when I was, um, developing not so much a Sioux Brewing Company, but with the sixteen sixty-eight winery and the growth of, uh, Lockside Brewery. And now I have a chance to help them out because we're having an event tomorrow from six till nine, uh, it's called Raise a Pint. Uh, and, uh, for every pint that we sell tomorrow, we're donating, uh, a dollar to the, uh, nonprofit Northern Initiatives. But also it's about raising awareness. So if there's anyone out there who, you know, has an idea, maybe they don't have the wherewithal to do everything they need to do, maybe they, you know, need a, uh, maybe they can't get a loan in a conventional way, or maybe they just need some advice, whether it be, you know, how their business could better use social media or anything of that nature. Uh, they offer in certain situations, uh, some consultancy as well. So, um, I would invite, uh, anyone who's business-minded to come down to the winery tomorrow between six and nine, talk to the Northern Initiative folks and, uh, buy a pint and therefore donate a dollar to Northern Initiatives.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Gage?
Wouldn't be a meeting without me saying something at the end. Um, another fantastic meeting, but I want to comment on, uh, the amazing murals that are going up around town. Lloyd Eddy, who was the air professor, uh, from Lake Spur State University, has just finished his mural on the side of Piganture Cleaners. And if you haven't seen it, it's fantastic. his mural on the side of Pigantor Cleaners, and if you haven't seen it, it's fantastic. And it's just great to see that mural up and running. I've seen some paint on the side of 1668 Winery, and it's just fantastic to see that, along with the crosswalk art. Our town is getting much prettier and much cooler on a daily basis, so. That's my other comment.
Okay, thank you. And just before we adjourn, I'd like to mention at least Voyager Island and Dennis Story and that group. I think we, as a commission, have seen some of the pictures that they have done on the landing area, the compost, I think they call them compost toilets, a platform, race platform for viewing. I can't believe the amount of work that they've done in just a short period of time, and now it's walkable. And they have trails on Voyager Island, which is now behind Steer Island, just, just south of Steer Island. If you have a kayak or a small boat, it's accessible, you know, it's safe waters from the mainland here. And I'd like, at some point, maybe next meeting, to have those pictures that we can put up on, on the screen to show folks looking at home, what that has become. And certainly, eventually, we'll get Dennis in here and thank him properly, too, because it's his group, and he's just, he's just tremendous. We see what he's done to Seal Park, or the old Minneapolis Woods area, and the trails that have gone. And now that was, that was Dennis leading the charge, and he has a cadre of people that will just, you know, they just come out and work many, many hours and volunteer their time, and he goes after the funds. And it hasn't been many city funds in this, in both of those projects, but he's, he's done a tremendous job. I'm certainly thanking him publicly here, and we'll do it later. But I think the, the pictures of people can see what's going on, and, and the amount of kayak activity in the Lower River Islands, too. Linda Basissil lives down that way, and you can see them from, from their front window type of thing. There's, there's 15, 20 kayaks a day, I think, in there, and it's, it's great to see. And the, and the boards that have a sail on them, and that kind of, I mean, it's tremendous.
We should organize a commission field trip.
Yeah. Not going to get me on one of them. But they're, you know, they're, they're great to see. Yeah, okay, yeah, I could, yeah, if I could sit down and, you know, it sounds good. Anyone else?
That's it.
Let's go to Commissioner Lynn.
Your Honor, so moved that we adjourned this meeting.
Support.
If there was support, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same sign? Thank you very much, we adjourned.